I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Please bow and pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the city of God, and Father, give us wisdom in making decisions that are positive and beneficial to all of our citizens. Pray your guidance and blessing beyond this time, in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Okay, I have a C, I seek a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion.
I second.
Okay, Krista has made the motion, Keaton seconded, in discussion, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item B, set some comments. You have an opportunity to address the council, three minutes. We're here to listen at this point. I'll open the meeting for citizen comments. That's fine. We will close citizen comments, since there aren't at this point. Use this on the ex parte conflict of interest declaration. At this time, I'd like to give the council members a chance to clarify conflicts of communication they have in light influence or ability to consider the days of due items impartially. Okay, all right. Moving on to item F.
Thank you, let me step in for this.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, it's my distinct pleasure to recognize community member Ben Healy this evening. Mr. Healy of Healy Investments, he's made a significant donation to the city of Goddard's park system and our broader community. Mr. Healy has been an integral role in improving our disc golf park there at Linear Park. He brought in several large stones slash boulders, tough to describe them, and with the partnership of our public works team, they're able to create a signature hole in our disc golf course. So we had the PDGA tournament here a couple of months ago, hole thirteen, it was a major hit because of Mr. Healy's contributions. He did play, when we have him come up and get his plaque, I'll let you pack, I'll let him tell you what the score was. Here's a, here's a look at the hole, these are Mr. Healy's stones here that he provided to improve the hole thirteen. If you're familiar, you can see the rec fields back here, walnut streets adjacent to this hole. This is a cool, unique feature here, it creates a tunnel shot. If you look where my laser pointer is at, that's where this is, the green with the basket. So it's a real cool hole, it's kind of a difficult one, you gotta drive from here, get it through the key hole, and hopefully land it up here. Three is a par, I don't know how many birdies we had at our tournament, but probably only one or two, so this also helps us a bit with our erosion control, because we have a pretty significant bit of our stormwater system that goes through here. So, Mr. Healy, why don't you come on up, let us recognize you, give her a round of applause, guys. Do you want to say a few words?
Uh, you know, I just wanted to say that, um, thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. Um, you know, the city staff really, I mean, I just brought them over on the trailer, that's all I did, that's all I did, and those guys, I gave them, you know, I told them maybe what I would do, but they didn't need any, and they did a really, really fine job on that. So, you know, Alan especially, he did most of the work, and they did a great job. So, uh, like I said, I just pulled up the trailer and they did the rest, so, um, I would encourage you guys, just selfishly, you know, I love disc golf now, and I'm getting more into it, yes, I played in the tournament, yes, I did get dead last. I thought it was gonna be, I thought it was gonna be okay, but I was horrible. It's actually a really hard course. I've heard that from a lot of people, and there was a pro guy, worked for me in Oklahoma, and he said it was a pretty hard course. I went to Millbrook, which is over there on 119th, and this is a much better course, so harder and just more entertaining, so, but you got a very good thing here, and we do plan on, you know, with okays for the city to do more, you know, we've got a lot of these stones, and we're happy to provide them, so, um, I think, I think the next one is maybe seventeen? Seventeen maybe is, uh, that could be pretty cool. So, I know everybody's not into it, but, um, it's a really cool thing, I encourage you guys to keep, uh, keep supporting it, I guess, I think it'll be a pretty big draw in the future, just like I think that tournament was pretty good, right?
Yes.
I mean, I know he, I think he had ninety spots available, and he had people on the waiting list, so, it was good, um, and there wasn't, you know, people just understood, just saw this for the first time, it's not like this was the draw to that, but they, they did like it, so, um, anyway, thank you very much.
Mr. Healy, will we get a picture of you with the mayor in front of our logo here? Let's give him one more round of applause, guys.
Who's got the camera? If I would have played, I would have played next to Lannister.
I don't know, I don't know, actually, I did meet two people, a small child, and then an elderly lady. I didn't get, totally.
I saw the small child, he was pretty good.
All right, thank you. It's not gonna be rude if I take my trophy and get out.
No, no.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, Chief's gonna swat stop you for the door.
Yeah.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this agenda I have here is a proclamation honoring the lives of Richard and Vicki Kilmer. I'm gonna read the proclamation to you here. I believe we have a member of the family with us to provide the proclamation to, I'm gonna hand it off to the mayor after I read. Honoring Richard and Vicki Kilmer. Rick and Vicki were married on August sixteenth, nineteen sixty-eight, and went on to spend over fifty years together. Both dedicated educators and cherished community members, the Kilmers combined decades of service to the Goddard community as teachers, coach, and in Vicki's case, librarian. Rick Kilmer began his teaching career in nineteen seventy and spent over forty years working in the USD two-six-five district in Goddard, Kansas. He went on to serve in various administrative roles, including assistant principal, acting principal, and athletic director, where he was affectionately known as Mr. Kilmer or Coach. Vicki Kilmer was a steadfast supporter of Goddard sports, assisting her husband Rick by working the gate at ballgames, keeping books for volleyball, running the concession stand for football and basketball, and hosting hospitality rooms for various tournaments and competitions, earning the admiration and gratitude of the entire coaching and instructional staff. Now therefore, be it resolved that we honor the lives and legacies of Richard and Vicki Kilmer, recognizing their unwavering dedication to education, their community, and their family, and we extend our heartfelt gratitude for the countless ways they enrich the lives of those around them. Be it further resolved that the contributions of both Richard and Vicki Kilmer to the Goddard community and beyond will be remembered with deep appreciation and respect, as they have left an indelible mark on the hearts of all who had the privilege of knowing them. Signed this twentieth day of May, twenty twenty-four, by Mayor George W. Lee.
Ryan. May I have Craig read this, because I don't think I could have, but, uh, just in some small way, hopefully this is an expression of the community's thanks and appreciation of your parents and all that they've done, and all things to the city of Goddard, so, thank you. Okay, moving on to item G, consent agenda. Everything, a motion approved.
Motion approved, consent agenda, seconded.
Keaton approves, no, Keaton, Brent approves, Keaton seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Item H, new finished business.
Mayor, City Council, H1, the Linear Park Trail Connectors, uh, we, this is an item of unfinished business, we had some conversation about it at our last council meeting, staffs been in the process of plenty of projects to create a bike connection to Linear Park from the residential area south, to create a new pathway from Planet Spruce connecting into the trail within Linear Park. Due to the presence of the drainage system between the residential streets and the park, there's been a significant amount of dirt work that'll be necessary, along with the installation of culverts. So you've seen this photo before, uh, one of the changes that we've made is we're in the preliminary design and planning of this, is rather than, uh, take this right off the curb line, it's actually gonna go through the middle here, uh, we're kind of working out how that'll interface with the tee pad, but, um, there's some ADA reasons, as well as drainage, as far as why that change has occurred in our planning. S and H Consultants, uh, we are working with them on the survey and design work, uh, to create a plan set that can be sent for the contractor. One of the things we're gonna bring up tonight is, as you guys know, we only have one bid for this work, uh, one of the reasons we feel that that is why, or that is so, is because the plan set is not yet complete, so it makes it more difficult for some of those bidders. So, if the council would like, uh, we could try rebidding this project, uh, once the plan set is developed, a little bit of survey work will need to be completed to do that. Uh, we also have taken some additional time to look at what we call an add alternate, that's basically an addendum or something additional you could consider as a part of the work, and that add alternate would be a composite boardwalk versus, uh, what we would say the base bid is just, um, you know, a concrete path. So, here's what the financials would look like, not to exceed about thirty-seven thousand for the base bid, no composite boardwalk, uh, if we did the composite boardwalk, it'd be about forty-four thousand, uh, for the base bid plus the boardwalk. Uh, these costs are, including what we anticipate, uh, the cost of the planning and design to do, we use a, uh, point-three-five factor when looking at that, uh, it's something, uh, a strategy we took from Harland over our years working with him, trying to kind of ballpark, um, survey and design work. So you have three options here, uh, you can approve the project for that base bid, you can approve the project including the boardwalk, or you can table this until the plan set is developed, and we can rebid the project.
Thoughts, ideas, questions?
I would add that my colleague, city planner Tina Powell, as well as Harland, has had, uh, their hands in on this one as well, so whatever I can't answer, compliment that Tina could assist, as well as Harland.
Do, what are, what are your thoughts? Do you think it would be worth rebidding in the future?
Well, we can get more of a competitive bid, and then as well, you can, you have options in different materials, you know, kind of what Craig was describing is just like a reinforced concrete pipe to allow a flow path and then bridge that, you know, with dirt, and then put a concrete path on it. So, otherwise, we could put something a little more aesthetic, if we had a little bit more design, refine the design, and with that, we'll need to, you know, outsource that work.
Sure, to me, I think we want to do it right, if we're gonna do it, so.
I think you'll have some more interest if you have a plan that a contractor can look at and know specifically, precisely what specific you want in there. We're gonna make a motion that we table it until the plan set is developed and rebid for the project.
Aye, second.
Brent motions, Krista seconds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
How do you finish business, number two?
Okay, item H2 is Linear Park lighting. Lighting Prairie Sunset Trail. Um, so, members of the city council requested city staff study the opportunity to install lighting along the Prairie Sunset Trail within Linear Park. Lighting creates a safer space for our community to exercise in early mornings or evenings, parking second and third shifters. The project would light a section of the trail west of May within Linear Park, and staff have identified cost-effective solution by partnering with EverG. So these are, you've seen this slide at our last council meeting, um, this is approximate spacing for, um, light holes. Okay, and city staff provides a site plan attached to the ZA, which illustrates the location of tin black, those are fire blast holes, around the trail spaced at two hundred and seventy-foot intervals, it approved EverG and the city approved contractor with four trench conduits, stubbed up, run the wire. I have placed a preliminary request for bid, um, from Betson, who's it, Betson Boaring, Betson Contractor, um, basically, they're gonna, they're going to send over, um, trenching everything, trenching the conduit or boring the conduit, uh, boring is more expensive, just so you know, but that is to, um, EverG can finish the design and it approved schedule for the installation of lights and poles and make the connection. That's the photo what the holes will look like. We haven't received that bid yet from the contractor, um, so that's a one-time cost assessed to the Parks and Rec Fund sixty dash two twenty dash eight six hundred, and one thousand eight hundred paid to EverG annually. And it is recommended that the city council table this to the first Monday in June until we get that bid back. EverG does have five approved contractors, um, that can all bid on their design and then install their CID wire with this contract, so...
Yeah, so, just to add a little more context and thanks, Tina, so at the last council meeting, we were waiting on EverG to submit their design, and what we had been told was that the, the contractors should be able to turn that around really quick. EverG didn't get their design to us until sometime last Friday, so we really only had the weekend to get the bids for the, you know, the boring and such. They, they offered, the, the boring contractor said they'd give us some prizes by seven o'clock tonight, but, um, obviously, different things happen in the field, time goes by, so they haven't, but having another two weeks, we should be able to get more than one boring contractor to bid this with the additional time, make sure we're getting a competitive cost, so, who knows how long it'll take, once we approve it at the council level, depending on EverG's work schedule and the contract, the boring contractors.
Kind of like an instant replay of the first item, so.
Make a motion, table this till June.
Aye, second.
Brent makes a motion, Krista seconds.
I heard.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, this is a revisit of the Century Playground, even in that was here last week, at the table, we had some, a couple of bid items, irrigation, relocation, dirt work, and true relocation of light, okay, one on there, I'm gonna do that now. Uh, I'm gonna give a real brief background, twenty seventeen, this flash pad and the pavilion project we're doing in the park. Twenty nineteen is when the new playground was built, and as we know, this is a part of the park. Vice Mayor Fish solicited us for proposals to add an inclusive play area to the park, we really didn't have it, and don't have anything right now for those folks. As a result, we contacted PlaceH for recreation, and they assisted us with the design of an inclusive play area that would include in-play structures. The playground would be constructed in a vacant area between the existing playgrounds. Again, here's the, the twenty nineteen playground, and that upgrade on the old playground for in twenty nineteen as well, new one would go in the center of them. Um, there are five proposed play structures, including a sensory summit range, a selfie swizzler, zero-grade inclusive orbit merry-go-round, a style of learning using the telephone, and a temple trolley. We'll see these in Exhibit B, that's the sensory summit range, neat item where the kids can go back and forth and do fun stuff, little inserts that can be changed to, whatever the easy one, whatever we do. Again, the selfie swizzler, that's the one the mayor said he was gonna jump in. Sorry, Derek, I did that last time, I had to, two for two. And then, and then the inclusive, uh, orbit merry-go-round, that's really kind of one I'm excited about, was kind of neat. And then the telephone, um, neat, little instrument out there, you make noise, make sound, make music, have fun. And then the neat, the really coolest one, the temple trolley, like, like we said last time, it's kind of like a zip line, um, but, but safer, slower, um, and you can put different, um, different seats on it, so you can do, so put different types of seats. Later on construction, we'll require the relocation of two trees and reline the several irrigation lines, and then a little bit of dirt work, obviously, to prep the area, to get ready for the form place. Those are the items that, um, we did not have last time we came, so we table it for this meeting. If, if this is passed, PlaceH says they can have this open in public by Labor Day twenty twenty-four. The interesting thing about that is we go on in the season, we're way too long to pass it, we'll have to wait another year, if it gets cold, you can't put the form place in with low temperatures, it just, it just won't dry well. As I said, the playground will be constructed between the existing playground and include an anti-resistant rubberized form place surface, that is a rendition of what it would look like when it's complete. Again, the cost, um, the cost went up with the, with the irrigation relocation, we've actually got irrigation fountain box right in the middle of this area, so there's several lines that have to be moved. Dirt work, of course, we, uh, had the dirt moved out and hauled off, and then, um, spading out the trees and spading them in to a different place of the park, we're gonna relocate them, we're gonna work with, um, the disc golf people to kind of use that to help contour some of the fairways. If approved, the one thirty, one hundred thirty-five thousand two ninety-six ninety-one would be allocated to capital improvement, of course, and direct capital output. Questions? Yeah, so I think one thing that, that I know we've got to look at is, this wasn't on the original plan for the year, uh, this was something that I kind of thought of a few months later in February, I brought it up to Craig, and, um, the team was able to get a lot of stuff together, um, but we don't have, the, you know, trail connectors and lighting, enough of the things that, that were on that plan, and so, um, I don't know if you guys want to table this until we have that, so we can look at the budget, I think they said they think we'd be able to do it, but if we're not comfortable, you know, if we want to wait until we're sure we can do it, you know, whatever you guys think.
Will this, uh, budget interfere with, uh, North, North Park plan?
I'll let Matt answer that question, Councilman Trailer.
No. We can do all of these.
Glad you're sitting down there. But it might, it would, it would bump the, the work we would, we talked about doing in the means park.
Mr. Mayor, Matt, do you want to articulate on that as well?
We have got, between our multiple funding sources that we are going, planning to use for park projects, I don't think, uh, expenditure for budget purposes is going to be an issue, I think timing will be an issue, so it's a matter prior towards and based on what you want to do first. We, whether it gets done this year or into next year, you know, it'll affect one budget or the other, um, we will have some more flexibility if some of this stuff gets pushed into next year, and also, we just don't have a lot of time, I mean, means park, it makes no sense to do anything there until after the pool is closed for the year or before it opens next year. Uh, the, uh, again, you're gonna have similar situation with anything we do at Linear Park, because we're taking away the playground for a certain period of time during probably the peak time of year that people want to do it, but again, there's only one way to make these projects go horrid, to, you know, sometimes have a little pain, so we can get to make it happen. But as far as budgeting is concerned, we have got planning in place, that we can do all the projects that we have proposed, uh, with our budgeted authority that we have in place, or with money we have set aside in capital approval, which does not require a annual budget effect on the project.
Well, I guess what I, what I'm saying is, I was on the original park board, park board from the park over here, and, uh, you know, it took forever to get anything done, and then how Mayor Fish can just come in and say, hey, let's do this, and boom, we're getting it done so fast. Can you answer that one?
So, we did our annual goal setting session, and, well, first, I'll backtrack, I can't attest to anything that happened before I got here, what I can tell you is that I like to work fast and get things done.
You were here during the old park board.
But I wasn't a, I wasn't an authoritative decision-maker at that time, so I can't speak to that. What, what I can tell you is, is we set the goals in late January, two of the projects discussed tonight were on that goal setting session, this one was not. It was brought up to me by a council member, so I started inserting it in the administrators' report to make the broader council aware, as well as sending out at least one email, I think in March, to let you guys know that, in another form of communication, that we were planning this project, so, that's kind of how we got from A to Z. I think, as Matt alluded to, it's not a matter of budgeting. I think, as Matt alluded to, it's not a matter of budgeting, it's a matter of sequencing. And how do you try to fit these in in a way that'll be the least amount of inconvenience as possible to the users of the park system?
What would be the timeframe as far as having everything torn up?
No, that's, pardon me. Now, since you asked that, I was literally texting Playscapes, okay, from Playscapes right before I came up to this. She had asked if this had been presented. She, the, the big key factor on this, if we choose to do it this year, is we have to get it started soon, get the playground items ordered and get everything scheduled. Because once you get past, like, you get into October and you start getting those cold nights and days, you cannot install a form place rubber surface. It gets too, too cold for it to cure. Other than that, we really don't have any, any time constraints, you know? But she's saying, well, a couple of weeks ago when we brought this, it would be, you know, Labor Day. I'm guessing we're still gonna be in that same timeframe, we're probably gonna look at a couple of week window either way there, depending on scheduling and when the actual light pieces arrive when they're ready. But the key is, if we're gonna do it this year, we've gotta get this in the ground, get this going and ready to put the form place in before the cold weather hits.
My other question is, is this the, I mean, this would make it, set it back more, but is this the only company that does this kind of playground? Are there other?
There are other companies. We chose Playscapes, we have a great, great relationship with them. They know us, they've done other stuff for us, they, they do playgrounds all over the place, and so it's a known commodity. Now, if council chooses for us to go out and look at other companies and get some alternative bids, we will certainly do that. It's, it's up to council how you would like us to proceed with this.
One of the reasons why we do a design bid is if you're working with a firm that has done a previous phase of a likewise project, so that was the reason why we went this route on this one. Of course, like Brooke said, we're more than willing to go out and advertise for bids. It's a little bit more challenging because you're talking about some pretty specific type play structures and dimensions and surface types, but it can be done. It's not as easy to get an apples-to-apples bid, but we can get as close to that as possible.
Like Craig said, that would be the concern, getting the exact same stuff in. It may be not quite apples.
Yeah, it's be a little different.
Might have a green apple for right now.
A little bit better than the other.
Well, if I had an opportunity to go to Tulsa this weekend, and my son is now the director of Tulsa County Parks. And we just had a brief discussion about all the different types of inclusive equipment that they have in the county parks in Tulsa. So it might not be a bad thing to do, too. Hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. And, and, and that way, I mean, it's kind of like the North Park, you know, we have nine different proposals in that. And we might end up with something even, even better, too, so. Sometimes that'd be something.
I'd like to make a motion that we direct the staff to get bids.
Brandon makes a motion, Keith seconds. All those in favor say aye.
So to be clear, council, you know, you'd like staff to get additional bids.
Yes.
We will do that, thank you.
Thank you. New business, moving on to item I one. Matt Long, Mr. CEO.
So, Randy was here, Randy Ford, our city auditor here a few months ago to present our 2022 audit. He's just the 2023 audit. This shouldn't be presenting that, he's also gonna tell you how you're seeing about this.
So will he be back in three months to do that? Will he be back in three months to do the 2024?
No, we won't be able to do that till April.
He's not that good. Well, last time I did make the map to the, I did.
We appreciate you being here.
I handed out a copy of the audit report, I'll take you through this quickly, because I went through it three months ago, I should probably remember everything. Flip into the yield visa, third page in, which is on our letterhead. That's our opinion on your financial statement. You follow the Kansas State Department basis of accounting, which is common practice, we'll put all small entities statements, we need to do so. So as a result, firstly, it's an adverse opinion that you do not follow general accepted accounting principles. We have to do that because these financial statements are used. Issues debt are publicly available, and more associated with a set of financial statements. There's an assumption it's in accordance with GAAP, general accepted accounting principles. The key paragraph is the third, that is an unmodified, excuse me, unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis account, which says, based on our audit, your financial statement is fairly presented in accordance with that basis of accounting. What that means is, when we did the audit, we focused on higher-risk things, larger dollar amounts, double-digit transactions, so we can't say it was perfect. But based on the audit, I didn't come across any issues or any statements in accordance with that basis of accounting or that you're improperly following that. Then after that, it's just a little more boilerplate type things. Stays that the city is responsible for your accounting and reporting. And then at a high level, starting on page two or page three, just kind of gives an overall summary of what I do. I perform an audit, once again, I consider risk, I do examine transactions, I pick what I want to, what I think is the proper way to test it, come up to my conclusion, I have to use fresh judgment to do so. Then after that, you have some supplement information which supports the financial statement, which is on page five. So your financial statement is a summary of your activity for the year, you're beginning cash, you see some expenditures. Key column is the income and covered cash balance. You notice your funds are all positive numbers, negative indicated cash basis violation, so they're worth it. That's one of the key compliance requirements to do with that. When I do the audit, there's about thirty-five that I have to consider, not all of which are applicable, but even across any of the lines, so. After that then are the notes, which just kind of explains what your entity is. Just a high kind of level about that basis of accounting I did earlier, how it differs from general accepted accounting principles. Page seven, once again, on a summary level, explains your budget cycle, explains the funds that aren't budgeted on page eight, and just general disclosures that are required for this basis of accounting. You did, in April, you issued some additional debt, that's on page ten. So even though that doesn't really directly affect the financial statement, that's where a third party user to be aware of the fact that there are more debt issues in what part of this report. And after that, information on your money that's held at various banks. We look to make sure everything is covered by the FDIC insurance plateau, no issues there. Page twelve is a summary of your transfers you've made for the year, those are the transfers to those special funds, those type of funds as well. And then just some information regarding your capital projects. You do have IRBs and there's just a estimate of the taxes that were dated on, on IRB property. Then on page fourteen or fifteen is your debt. So it kind of gives a summary of your debt, summary of the activity for the year, and then a five-year, a maturity schedule on page fifteen, for five years, and then five-year increment after that. So based on where you are right now, you'll be debt free, twenty-six four, that will stand as you pay off those temporary notes, which that was what it said all the way along. So that's your financial statement in somewhat of a summary. Then page sixteen starts with supplemental information, but it starts with a really important schedule that displays compliance with the budget off. So it shows your budget that you published, you really don't have adjustments that it has stated. Total budget compared to expenditures, key columns far right, negative indicator under budget, zero major write-off budget. So a positive number of indicated budget violation, you'll see that you didn't have any budget violations. Twenty-two, you have a very small library, so no issues there. And then after that, it starts on page seventeen with each of your individual funds with a little more detail. So it starts initially with your normal operating budget fund. You know, there's a few things like your general fund, highway fund, libraries, parks and drag, those types of things that collect tax money, so as a result, it's subject to the budget. Then starting on twenty-three are reserve funds, equipment reserves, water reserves, funds that are set aside for a specific purpose, generally funded by utility or one of the tax funds. Then after that, there are utilities which are budgeted, and the summary of action purposes of the bond and interest, then utilities, so it's in your budget fund. And then after that, it is the capital projects and the end of the library. And as I mentioned before, the library is included in this audit. The library is not audited separately, it's a part of this audit, there is a big difference. Then after that is some schedule that Matt has asked us to talk to provide in the conference room. Just gives you some find your trends, relay primarily to a little bit of operations, kind of keeping you in on cash. So that's a somewhat quick overview of the audit. And then I did hand out a two-page letter. This doesn't tell you how fantastic this year's office is, so it does say I didn't have any problems, no difficulty. I wrote it, I think, so. No issues, no significant adjustments, anything like that. So had I come across any problems, they would have been communicated with you, with numbers I want before today, so.
Any questions? Do we need a motion to accept the report or review it or?
Salary increase, if you do ask for it.
I didn't see that on the agenda, so.
We don't need a question.
We don't have any questions, Brandon, thank you so much, appreciate it. Thank you to know that everything's in balance and. From my banking days as a teller, I always used to tell people I trained as a teller, that it's a pretty simple deal, we don't want the balance to the pennies, so. So it's good to know that things are in balance, all the guys. I, I'm not sure I'm gonna be the person that audits the library and counts the books, but that's a whole other issue for the library and the back of the order, so. Anyway, let's move on here. Number two, final plot of Evergy South.
I don't know, Mayor, City Council, you're gonna see a little bit of extra meaning this evening because my colleague could be with us, he's got some other items going on. So I won't be able to read as fast as him, but I will try to get through as quickly as I can, so. MKDC submitted a plot application on behalf of the developer, Mr. Schellenberg, tract of land thirty-first and one eighty-third, around eighty acres, Susanix, into the city, December twenty-three. As you likely know, we don't have one-step plating here, so there has to be a preliminary and a final plot, both through the Planning Commission. On April eighth, Planning Commission approved the prelim plot, and last Monday, I want to say it was, they approved the final plot. Here is the location of this land. If you're familiar, we have the schools complex over here. You have current Arbor Creek and the first few phases of it, right there to the north. This is a look at the final plot, it's kind of a snapshot in the agenda packet. You've got a more zoomed-in look at each of the sections of the land. Brief analysis here, two hundred forty lots, these will all be R1 single-family homes with lot size minimums of sixty by one hundred. I'll just add, these bigger lots up here will reflect more of what you see in current Arbor Creek. These ones down here are gonna be more of your starter home type, you can tell by the lot sizes. Financial non-legal approvals to form, the recommendation is that the city council approve the final plats. Myself, Arlen Forker, our city engineer, to answer any questions. Brooke and Tina as well, we've all been sitting in on meetings with the developer, kind of working through drainage, public utilities, et cetera. All that has been accounted for at this juncture.
Any questions? I want to take a motion, put a motion to a question.
I got a motion that we recommend for the, for the final plan, yeah.
Arbor Creek South, well?
Yes, that's what I was gonna say.
Brandon move, Crystal second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number three, say batter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, not to be confused with Arbor Creek South. This is Arbor Creek Phase Three, public infrastructure, the bid award, twenty nineteen, going back a few years. Final plot was approved for regular Arbor Creek, I'll call it. Petitions for the public infrastructure, special assessment financing were approved by the council on March twentieth of twenty twenty-three. On May fourteenth of twenty twenty-four, bids were opened for Phase Three, paving incidental drainage collector, paving incidental drainage, sanitary sewer, water distribution main extension and water distribution system. Phase Three includes approximately eighteen lots and is illustrated in the aerial here, it's gonna be the light blue. If you've driven around the area before, this street kind of comes down here and dead ends, and there's like some red signs here that don't let you turn onto the undeveloped land. I think the, there is a house on one of these lots here, but anyway, the, the low bid came in from Noak Construction, local firm. Here in Goddard, you can see we had a fairly competitive bidding process with six different bidders there in the bid tab. We included the comprehensive bid tabulation in the agenda packet. Financials, you'll see there, five hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars allocated to bond and interest fund. Legal teams approved this to form, and you can see staff's recommendation here. We'll stand for questions. Again, for this is an item.
Any questions? I've seen a motion approved, any questions?
Okay, to the back.
Sure.
No doubt, we want to go. The bids.
Oh, the bids.
The bid, yeah. Is it always, normally we go with the low bid?
We don't say that we go with the low bid, we say we go with the best bid. And in this case, Noak Construction has done quality work in the past, and then the low bid.
Quite a bit of work, too, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Up to you guys.
What are you passing it?
Well, I mean, it has a Pierce Mill. Exactly.
Are they the ones doing the street projects?
They are.
Noak is local.
Noak's local, oh, okay.
They are, Noak is a local business on Industrial Road.
Okay.
They do lots of.
Make a motion that we approve Noak.
A motion approved by Brandon.
My second.
Crystal seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The train has let the stage cut up.
Well, that's all good.
Yeah. Good questions. Next.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Reinvestment Housing Ascended District Act Resolution Number Two. I'm gonna use the acronym RHID, it's a program designed to assist in development of housing for areas approved by the city and Kansas Department of Commerce. Allows the city to reimburse the developer for eligible costs occurring during the development of specific tract of land. How that works is the difference of the tax generation is eligible for reimbursement with the exception of the state's mill levy, as well as twenty mills of the school's mill levy are protected. An RHID tract will allow the city to supplement the capital stack for development to incentivize the creation of desirable housing developments. That first resolution I mentioned earlier was passed September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, goes for a different project. This new resolution would add additional tracts to the RHID geographies. Here's a look at the step-by-step process here. We are in step two. Step one was already completed. And so, I think what is really important to note is that step two just avails the opportunity for the city council to, you know, consider a future development plan which will be a part of step four. And you'll see all the intimate details of the project. What type of housing are we discussing? How much, what's the cap on this RHID gonna be? What eligible costs are they wanting to utilize? The city has the right to negotiate all of that, and so step two is not, you know, once you go through that step, you still have several opportunities along the way to get more familiar with the project and make a decision, assuming that you approve step two and then also that the state of Kansas approves step three. So, here are the eligible costs for RHID. I am told that for this specific development, they're gonna be focusing on costs that cannot be financed using special assessments. The strategy here is the, is an attempt to get the.
The strategy here is there is an attempt to get the price of these houses down to closer to, you know, your starter home, and so the RHID tool could help accomplish that. We don't have a lot of new housing opportunities in, you know, a price range that many can afford, so. Here's a look at this, these tracts of land that we're considering, 183rd and Maple. The other one here is the undeveloped portion of Cloverleaf Farms. Financial non, legal approved is to form. Kevin Cowan, our bond counsel, Gilmar Bell, could help provide assistance here, and the recommendation would be that staff approve the resolution establishing the RHID district for the recommended tracts of land. Sorry, someone must have got hungry and ate that last word. There's a resolution attached in your agenda packet that has a legal description for these tracts of land. And I would just reiterate that step two here, again, you'll still have several opportunities to continue to vet this project. Questions from the bench, you per staff?
Could you back up and show the second picture?
And I apologize, this one was done by someone a lot more artsy than I am.
No, that's fine.
I threw this one to cover myself.
Just trying to get in my mind where that is.
Here's the fire station.
Gotcha.
Here's Cloverleaf, right here. These are all duplexes.
Just looks like a, it's cool.
He does, huh, yeah?
You flip, you flip trips so fast.
Sorry. Slow me down at any time.
Questions?
I have a lot, I have a couple of questions. If we, I mean, RHID is pretty new to all of us, and so I understand that the objective is to try and keep the cost low, so that there could be more affordable housing, but what is to stop the developer from putting a different price tag on it once the development is made? I mean, what happens in that instance?
So we, and assuming this was approved tonight, we have the opportunity to negotiate what the cap is on the RHID, and we have an opportunity also to enter into a development agreement if we would like to put additional restrictions to protect from some of the concerns. However, you know, that would have to be negotiated, and I think I would encourage the governing body to get to the point of where you're looking at a development plan, so you have all the details as part of what's trying to be accomplished with the project, so. Kevin, did you want to add anything to that?
So this is just the next step in pushing it forward, this doesn't approve anything.
Correct, this is step two, 1A, and assuming it were approved tonight, it would go to the state of Kansas, they would have to then ratify your decision, and then at that point, we will start getting numbers, more refined detail on the project. That's step four, you have to have a hearing, and of course, the, there's two other taxing jurisdictions that have the authority to consider this project as well, should they so choose.
Does, does this open it up for even more developers to come to us with RHIDs going forward of this project and other developments that want to come out to Goddard?
I think that it would be difficult to make that assumption. I think the developers can ask for all the incentives available in the toolkit, and it's up to us to determine what our needs are and what we would like to incentivize.
With the recent experience that we've had with RHIDs and the apartments, has the developer maybe had second thoughts about going through the process with the county's policy the way it is? In my view, this may be a little restrictive, I'm not trying to be critical of the county, but we're talking about spending a lot of our time, their time, and if the way things are with the county's position, maybe there's other means and tools in the toolkit that will readily avail themselves instead of going down that path again. I'm s, I mean, I, I think it's a fair question.
I, I think it's a great question, and I certainly do not speak on behalf of the applicant in any capacity, but what I have heard is that there are conversations about how this project would be received by other taxing jurisdictions. Again, I'd encourage you to get to step four, have them, have the developer come in and maybe speak on their own behalf to tell you how those conversations are going, and provide the intimate details of the development plan.
Do you have something? Should we just move on and go through the, get to the next step? If they're willing to take the, the time and the risk.
If they will, you go for it, I guess.
I mean, it's just turned down.
I, I, I say no.
I mean, I guess it depends on what to do, because the last one was for apartments, that wasn't really what RHID was designed for, and it sounds like this is single-family homes.
But what are the long-term, we don't know about the long-term.
Sure, I mean, the only way we find out is by proving this one, and then, I mean, if we approve this, we can still deny it at the next step, right? This doesn't lock us into anything, this just allows them to continue.
Correct.
So, I mean, I mean, I, I think it's worth giving them a shot if they will, like George was saying, or like the mayor was, sorry. Like Mayor Lee was saying, I mean, if they will, we go for it, but I'm okay with letting them get to that next step and seeing, and then if it comes back to us and we don't like it, then we shoot it down then, and.
What are your thoughts?
I feel that we've already been down this route before.
I'll entertain a motion to do something.
Have we seen the county approve anything?
We were the first, we were the first arrow that they shot at, so.
Right, hey, we're the, we're the ones that they shot at.
First, I mean, they, there's just a lot of variables in this, and, I mean, there's a, an argument in, in terms of trying to prove to the county and the city that if it's not for this incentive, this development would not go forward. And we're talking about 32 single-family homes on that corner. And I with a thought that in a community of 5,600 people, that doesn't have a new market square three miles away from us, that doesn't have an apartment complex that hasn't been built for 50 years, that if not for that incentive, that they're, they would see that. And I know that in terms of the relationship between the amount of tax we pay, the 17% mill levy for the city of Goddard last year generated a little over a million dollars in tax revenue to pay for fire service. The actual first increment payment on that apartment complex was about 3.5%. One of the things I had suggested is maybe they come up with a some ratio, a data point, where they.